Hey, hello, everybody. As you can probably see, I am not the Mayor Mitchell. I am the new improved Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you also very much for being here today. First, we are going to start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, those of you that could, would you please rise? Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We actually have a couple of our members on the phone. We have Mayor Mark Mitchell is on the phone and also Councilmember Granville is on the phone, and I do believe that Councilmember Navarro will be calling in very shortly. So, again, thank you for that. I know it's going to be a little bit hectic, but we're going to definitely get through it. We appreciate you all being here tonight. And we're going to go ahead and start with our meeting minutes. Item 3A, 1 and 2, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move the approved items A1 and 2.
There's a second? Oh, 3A, 1 and 2, is that what you said?
Yeah, 3A, 1 and 2, thank you.
Seconded, yes. All right. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Motion passes.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Keep forgetting about the counts as above. All right. Motion passes, 6 to 0. Yep, no Joel yet. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to acceptance in Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes, and that is item 3B, 1 through 12, I believe. Is there a motion? Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I motion we approve items B, or 3B, 1 through 12.
Seconded. All right. Motion has been made and seconded for the acceptance of Board Commission Committee Minutes. All those in favors, please say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes, 6 to 0. All right, thank you, guys, very much. All right, Mayor's announcements, or Vice Mayor's announcements, as I'm going to call them today. We do have a few things that I am going to come downstairs. We always make fun of Mark for everything that he does, so now I can't really do it. So, there I go.
Thanks, Robin.
Don't tell them that I wore extra-large, tall shoes, too, just in case. All right, first thing is, I don't know if you guys recently know this, but we have celebrated the National Public Works Week, and we were actually highlighted during Public Works. We highlighted Public Works employees that we all know really play a vital role throughout the city, and we couldn't do anything without them. So, I'm going to go ahead and invite Jason Brown. Jason? You hear it? There you are, right there. Look at them all dressed up. Jason Brown is a solid waste services manager, so he is going to come down here and join me. And just so you kind of guys know, just a little facts about our solid waste team. It includes 51 drivers, yeah, over 50 pieces of equipment, and in the year 1617, they actually drove over 500,000 miles. So, it definitely takes a lot of highly skilled people to be able to do that, but it also takes a really great leader. So, I want to just say thank you so much for everything that you do. And with, before you guys clap and get excited, I got this excellent proclamation that I want to read really quick, on behalf of the mayor. Whereas, "Slow Down to Get Around" is a nationally safety campaign promoted to the Solid Waste Association of North America aimed at reminding motorists to drive carefully near solid waste and recycling collection vehicles, and whereas public works solid waste vehicles come in all shapes and sizes, and is important for motorists to recognize that they are inherent hazards when approaching a solid waste vehicle. And whereas drivers cannot always see oncoming motorists due to the size of their trucks and limited visibility, each time the operators exit their vehicles, they are likely to encounter a distracted motorist. And whereas this year alone, there have been 23 deaths within the industry, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, report for 2016 concludes that solid waste collection is the fifth deadliest job in the United States. And whereas SWANA consists of 10,000 members within the United States, their program focuses on research, education, certification, training, networking, and safety, whereas we value the safety of our community and city workers. And whereas, we understand that getting where we need to be is important, but remember to slow down, be attentive, and cautious of your surroundings when driving, and whereas we commit ourselves to safe driving environment for our community and our employees, and we recognize June 19, 2018, as Slow Down to Get Around Day, that kind of looks like a thing, Slow Down to Get Around Day, that reminds motorists to drive carefully near our public works vehicles. So, now, therefore, I, not Mark Mitchell, Robin Arredondo Savage, Vice Mayor of the City of Tempe, do hereby declare the week of June 19 as Slow Down to Get Around Week in Tempe, Arizona. So, congratulations, guys. Thank you. Come on, this is your opportunity. Take something good. No pressure.
Yeah. I just love to be able to serve the public. Our biggest priorities is health and safety, and that's why we try to spread that message to those around us in the communities as well. Our drivers not only work inside the vehicles, we get out quite often as well. So, when you're thinking about passing that garbage truck on the left or the right, just keep in mind there could be a worker outside as well. So, we appreciate anything that you can do to help us.
We appreciate you. Thank you, Jason, and all the employees and everybody. Thank you, guys, so very much. Let me, yes. All right. We have another proclamation tonight, and that is for Juneteenth. I'd like to call up Michelle Brooks. Michelle Brooks, is she here? Yeah. What's that? Oh, Joanne, perfect. Come on up, Joanne. Hey, you know what, Joanne? If you want to bring your team up, bring them on up, too. If you have some friends and guests that you hear are part of the commission, bring them on up. So, while they're making their way here, I just want to just give you like a really quick oversight. Juneteenth celebrates a very important event in the United States' history, the ending of slavery in our country. Today, Tempe celebrates this important time and the oldest known celebration on June 19, 1865. Although President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation went into effect in January 1863, it wasn't until Juneteenth that slavery was abolished in Texas and much of the Confederate South. I'm very proud, very proud, to recognize this important day in our history with the proclamation of Juneteenth in Tempe. So, we are very lucky to have some representative or African-American Advisory Committee here. Yes? All right. Thank you, guys, all very much for being here. And again, I have a wonderful opportunity of reading this proclamation for you. This proclamation, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, formally abolishing slavery in the Confederacy, and whereas on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's two-and-a-half-year-old emancipation proclamation and declare freedom for all slaves. And whereas, every year after, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in the celebration of freedom on June 19, and the day became known as Juneteenth. And whereas, across the country, Americans continue to celebrate Juneteenth as a day to reflect on the torment of slavery, remember the joyful Declaration of Freedom, and rejoice with family and friends. And whereas, the Tempe Diversity Office, the Tempe History Museum, and the African-American Advisory Committee will be hosting a Juneteenth celebration to honor African-American heritage and remember the lives of slaves. And whereas, this celebration gives all Tempeans the opportunity to commemorate the heritage of our city's African-American population as we renew our commitment to combat injustice and hold to the values of inclusion, equality, and justice. So, now, therefore, I, Robin Arredondo Savage, Vice Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do declare June 16 as 2018, as Juneteenth in Tempe, Arizona. So, thank you, guys, so very much. We're going to, before, before, come on. This is our president, and I want to...
The African-American Advisory Committee is very appreciative of the acknowledgement and presentation of the, what was this?
Proclamation.
Proclamation. I'm so nervous, I think.
You're doing, she's doing great.
Michelle Brooks Tatress is the president of our subcommittee for the Juneteenth program or event, and so I'm going to let her explain to you the events that we have scheduled for that Saturday, June 16. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the African-American Advisor Committee, as Joanne Cooks has said, we are very pleased with this proclamation. We invite all citizens of Tempe to come out. We have two programs, Friday, June 15, with Dr. Matthew Whitaker, and Saturday is our family-filled day from 1 to 4, and our theme is Breakthrough to Freedom. We will have information, resource tables, we'll have music performance, food, and it'll be a wonderful time to celebrate the African-American heritage here in Tempe. So, we hope we see you.
Thank you, Michelle, and team, for everything that you do. Congratulations. All right, we have UAEA 2018 Scholarship Presentation. Jackie, are you here?
Where?
Oh, there you are, hiding over there, right on. Okay, so UAEA, a lot of vowels in there, the United Arizona Employee Association Award, just so you know, two educational scholarships each year, and I think it's really a remarkable thing that you guys continue to do, and I'm very proud of the work that you do and the way you represent the employees of Tempe. So, Jackie, I will go ahead and let you present this year's scholarship award. Come on over. You guys don't really want to hear me that bad.
Our first awardee is Mia Simone Dorwick. She is the daughter of John, who works in, fire inspector? Yes, okay.
Congratulations. Let's take a photo.
And our second awardee is Darrell Scott Wilson. Where are you going to school? ASU, accepted into. And Darrell is the son of Hilda Bermudas. Hilda works in PD. She is a vehicle impound specialist.
Darrell, congratulations. You guys, let's just give it up one more time. I mean, really excited to see these young people. And two of my alma maters, Mesa Community College and Arizona State University, so you guys are incredible. Keep doing what you're doing. All right, hang on one sec. Well. That's perfect. Okay. I think we got it all right. All right, just so everybody knows, let's see, that there are actually our board and commission appointments tonight, and they are outlined in item 5A1 on the agenda moving forward. City Manager, do you have any reports or announcements?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. I do have one transitional announcement to make. Sad to report that Anita Erspammer, who's worked for the city for 25 years and is one of our executive assistants in the City Manager's office, is retiring tomorrow's her last day, and while she's certainly not someone who craves a spotlight, she's certainly someone who deserves it. She is an amazing employee, someone who we just enjoy very much working around, and we wish her nothing but the best in retirement.
All right, we know Anita will definitely be missed, and I know Ken Jones is sad. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda item. The consent agenda item, of course, is going to be considered as one big group, and we will make a motion from the City Council unless any items removed for separate consideration. Members of the public, where you move public hearing items for separate consideration, but those public hearing items are actually marked with an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. So, is there anybody in the audience? Oh, actually, I have to remove a few items, so bear with me on this one. There have been a few changes. I think they did it to me on purpose, to mess me up, but let's see. So, we are on miscellaneous items, items 5A1 through 5A10, with the exceptions of item 5A3, 5A5, and 5A10, which have been removed and deleted from the agenda of the request of staff. And then we have awards of bids and contracts, item 5B1 through 5B19, and resolutions, item 5C1 through 5C5, with the exception of item 5C2, which has been removed and deleted from the agenda at the request of staff also. So, are there any agenda items that are marked with an asterisk that somebody would like to speak on? No? All right, I will go ahead and close that public hearing part and look to my council colleagues. Is there any items wishing to be pulled? Councilmember Granville, Mayor?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
No, thanks, Vice Mayor, for asking.
Oh, all right. The voice from above, Councilmember Navarro has joined us. I'm so sorry, I didn't know he was there. So, we're going to kind of work through that. All right, so there are no items for separate consideration? Oh, my goodness. All right, do we have a motion for approval? Okay. Motion has been made for approval of consent agenda items minus 5A3, 5A5, 5A10, and 5C2. All those in favor say, oh, all those, let's just vote. And then I will ask the voices from above. Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Granville?
Aye.
And yes, I voted yes. And I vote yes, too. So, all right. Consent agenda passes, I am 7 to 0. All right. Let me get my notes straight here. Okay, we are going to go ahead and move on to the non-consent agenda items, and the non-consent agenda items will be considered separately, so you get to hear my voice a little bit more. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. An agenda item scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. So, the first item under this section is 6A1, which holds a second and final public hearing to receive public comment on and to adopt a resolution approving the submission of the annual Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would wish to address the council regarding this item? Please get my attention. All right, see none. Is there any comments from our council?
Motion to approve?
There is a motion on the table, is there a second? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I voted for Mark. Mark's...
Aye.
I gotta stop doing that.
Aye.
Really far. I vote aye, too. All right. Thank you for that. Motion 6, item A6A1, passes 7 to 0. All right, 6A2, hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year, approving the fiscal year 2018-19, annual assessment of the City of Tempe Downtown Enhancement Services Improvement District, ruling on objections, making corrections, approving a new district map, and approving modified assessments. This, too, is a public hearing item. Or is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address us regarding item 6A2? Get my attention now. See none? My council colleagues? No? Good? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded twice for the approval of item 6A2. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Excellent. All right, motion passes, 7 to 0. Thank you all very much. The next item under this section is 6A3, award a construction manager at-risk construction contract to Aiken Gardner Construction LLC for the sanitary sewer collection system rehabilitation phase 1, rehabilitation located at various locations around the city. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second? Thank you.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I didn't hear.
Councilmember Cooby?
Thank you.
And Councilmember Schire. All right. All those in favor of approval of item 6A3, please vote? Aye?
Aye.
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 It's a little slow, but we're getting there. All right, motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you all very much. The next item under this section is 6A4, approve a one-year contract renewal with Cigna Dental Health Plan of Arizona Incorporated to provide a dental preferred provider organization plan and a dental health maintenance organization plan for eligible city employees and their dependents. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 We get them all? Missing one? Joel?
Aye, that was the first one.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Granville?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I think we got it. All right, motion has been approved, 7 to 0. All right, 6A5, approve a one-year contract renewal with Express Scripps to provide pharmacy benefits management services for eligible city employees and their dependents. Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Sorry, motion passes 7 to 0. Yeah, we're good? Okay. All right. Item 6A6, approve a one-year contract renewal with Allegiance Benefit Plan Management Incorporated Cigna to provide a preferred provider organization, medical network, flexible spending account administration, and Consolidate Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act administration services for eligible city employees and dependents. Is there a motion? Second? Thank you, Lauren, for paying attention. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favors, please vote or say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, got through it. Okay. Item passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next non-consent agenda, which is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken in the second hearings, and votes of these items are scheduled for June 28, 2018. So, the first item under the section is 6B1, introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Board of Regents on behalf of the Arizona State University and the City of Tempe, allowing for the exchange of property. The second and final hearing is scheduled for June 28, 2018. So, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council?
I believe you have a card.
I believe I have a card. For 6B1, Trevor Barker. Oh, Trevor Barker. Welcome.
Vice Mayor and Council, Trevor Barker. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. The topic of the Right-of-Way IGA and the Code Text Amendment, which will be coming before you shortly, for me are tied together and allows me to talk about my favorite topics, which is placemaking and urban development. Together, these two make a great plan, clearly the product of the council's leadership in placemaking and sustainability and urban development, the diligence of our skilled staff, and the creativity of Cattellus, Sasaki, and ASU. It is a truly innovative model for development review and approval in the City of Tempe, protecting property rights, and establishing long-term government income streams for education, arts, and culture. I commend JRC's efficiency and effectiveness reviewing and approving the Code Text Amendment proposal in only one meeting. I encourage the council to quickly and effectively embrace and approve this new and improved innovative development process, not only for Cattellus, but also as a model for all of Tempe. It should be the model for Tempe's downtown master plan currently being created. The Code Text Amendment, which will come before you soon, seamlessly streamlines the city's development and review process and approval process. It is similar to Tempe's pre-2010 process, with DRC and JRC review and approve all of the development standards, the development plan review, and only a few cases come into council for zoning designation changes, primarily density and use, and general plan designation changes and appeals. It removes any regulatory standards or requirements for maximum height, for building step backs, for lot coverage, for minimum landscape area, for building setbacks and parking, and other than density and reuse, it returns to the self-governing development standards of market economy. The new and improved process also brings back the meaning of NS in the zoning code to be no standard, and leaves these items to the DRC and JRC to decide. Similarly, to the Code Text Amendment, the IGA that was approved last year and the Right-of-Way IGA being proposed now creates an acquisition through a trade with AVAR and resets the norms for property rights in the City of Tempe. It removes the nexus between redevelopment requests and right-of-way exemptions. This method is much more equitable to all of the players in an urban area that has already been fully developed and is now redeveloping. I commend the council's affirmation of Tempe's commitment to property rights by considering this action, which would be acquisition of right-of-way instead of exchange for development rights. The innovative Code Text Amendment and this Right-of-Way IGA set forward a policy of acquiring right-of-way in phased manner with development and only with needed, no longer requiring it all upfront at once. They further set out a method to privatize roadways and alleys, reducing the city's maintenance costs. Finally, the Code Text Amendment includes an innovative way to generate ongoing government revenue for programs such as education, culture, and arts. It encourages government to provide and own parking and large efficient core structures financed by government and lease to private development for the public for long-term revenue stream. Once the cost of the efficient structure is repaid, the income from these can be used indefinitely to fund education, arts, and culture, something that this council and all of Tempe is committed to. The process for these parking elements is streamlined even further, removing all barriers, requirements, and review of the approval process other than staff review. This is a clever way to handle this need more efficiently and effectively in a downtown area. As an example, it would be a great model to use on the Tempe biomedical campus to fund the parking structure and the arts addition that wraps it. I can't wait for this innovative model of the Code Text Amendment and Right-of-Way IGA created by Cattellus, Sasaki, ASU, and our city staff to become the model in greater downtown Tempe for development, review, and approvals by the city, protection of property rights, establishing long-term income streams for education, arts, and cultural programs. Please approve... Please approve the right-of-way IGA that you'll be, you're considering for the first time tonight, the Code Text Amendment, and direct staff to mirror it in the Tempe's downtown master plan and update zoning code, which are going through their processes now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roger. Actually, I do believe that our city attorney, Mrs. Baumann, would like to just address a few comments.
Sure, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, mayors, members of council, and Mr. Barger, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to clarify for purposes of the record that the only item that is in front of the city council this evening is the first hearing to adopt the ordinance authorizing the exchange of property between the two public entities this evening, and that has to do with the power substations that we require. And I'm also happy to meet with you and chat with you a little bit further about some of the issues that you brought up.
Thanks, Roger.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barger. All right, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the city council regarding item B6B1? All right, seen none. Is there any comments from the council at this time? No? All right, and that is just a first hearing, so there'll be no action on this item tonight. The second item is 6B2, which is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for the planned area development overlay and development plan review for the new three-story 25, oh, 252,335 square foot industrial building for Precision Fleet Services located at 360 South Smith Road. The applicant is Colley Architects. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for June 28, 2018. And this is a first hearing. Is there anybody here to represent the applicant? Would you like to address the council? Thank you for being here. If you could just state your name and...
My name is Kevin Fawcett. I'm with Colley Architects, representing Precision Fleet Sales. I'm the vice mayor and council. Thank you very much for your time today. The project at hand is a, as you described, a 266, 267,000 square foot industrial facility on an approximately three-and-three-quarter acre pad located at the north, excuse me, southwest corner of Third Street and Smith Road. As you've probably seen in the report produced by Community Development, you'll see that there is a recommendation for approval. The staff report makes note of, obviously, a project like this introducing enhanced economic growth in that area, continuing a trajectory of development across that area consistent with the Tempe 2040 Plan. The project also is surrounded by existing industrial facilities, so it is nested essentially in a perfectly set, or a perfect setting for that type of use. The project also anticipates some adaptive reuse, and part of that goes to what is really the real request and the core element of the overlay that we're asking for as part of this PAD. Essentially, what we're looking for is an extra six feet of height, let's say, technically at six feet of height. In terms of being as transparent as possible, we have indicated, not as required, but as requested by planning to...
Aye.
...height as 50 feet, as opposed to the 44 feet as... ...perpet of the building. I think that there may be some concerns, at least the concerns that were... Should I pause?
Yeah, hold on. I'm not sure who's up there, but could you guys mute your phones, please? Thank you. Sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
No, that's okay. There have been some concerns expressed at neighborhood meetings, particularly by one landowner, had to do with some concerns about that increased height, which, as I described, is essentially six feet. In this case, we've worked very hard to be good neighbors. We had the opportunity to place this building directly up against the property line. We have actually pulled the building back off of that property line approximately 50 feet. So in this case, that extra six feet of height, clearly, clearly, there's some dissent on how that, you know, plays out, but ultimately, the use and the, the use and the functionality of our neighbor's property is unaffected and ineffective. We've really given them an opportunity to increase the value of their property because of the quality of the project that's going to be installed there. As such, we would ask that, as we get to the second hearing, the council rule in our favor and remain consistent with the staff report created by Community Development.
All right, thank you very much, Kevin. I appreciate you being here tonight. Are there any questions? Concerns? Mayor, council members? Anyone?
No, I'm good.
All right. I do have one question and maybe just something that you can think about moving forward, is if you kind of, if you look at the design, and I understand a lot of it, obviously, is parking, and when you look at the Third Street, the view from the Third Street of that building, it just seems so boxy. I mean, I understand the concerns about the height. I'm not so worried about that, but to me, it's really about the aesthetics and the way the building looks. So I don't know if there's anything that you can do, because really, the only thing that breaks it up are those small little windows, which is good, and I think that's a good addition. But I don't know if there's a little bit more that you could do, because you're really kind of setting the standard for what that streetscape and what the aesthetics of those buildings that may come after you are. So I think it's just really important that we get it right, and if there's a way that you can enhance that a little bit, because it really just looks, you know, very, you know, just super industrial in the sense of kind of institutional. So I don't know if there's a way that you could maybe think about aesthetically making it a little bit more pleasing to those going by, because that is just a really large area, too. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, probably most people don't know that it's, I think it's all a vacant lot right now.
Right. No, and I acknowledge the critique. To a degree, that's a function of the type of the building that it is and the zoning that's in place there. You will note, are you looking at a black and white or a color representation?
Color.
Okay. And you'll note that what we've done is we've introduced a series of vertical elements across that long facade to help modulate that, to break it up into more discrete elements. And then additionally, you'll see where we've added some screen material to, again, provide an area of focus across that facade.
Right. Well, maybe you could duplicate that, like, a little bit further on the other side, too, because the screen is just really on one side, it's not even in the middle. So just, you know, my two cents in regards to, you know, I know you're working through it, and I know the staff has been really good about, you know, trying to do, get the best type of quality that we can moving forward. But, you know, my thought process was it just, it just looks like it could use a little bit of something, and I'm hoping that you can kind of go back and figure what that is and hopefully not change things around too drastically, but...
We're very happy to take that under consideration.
Right. All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Nope. All right, thank you all very much. All right, again, this is just a first public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to us in regards to item 62? Nope? Okay, seen none. We're gonna go ahead and move on to 6B3, which is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of three portions of water and sewer line easements located in the new development near the southeast corner of McClintock Drive and East Apache Boulevard. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for June 28, 2018, and this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the council regarding this item? Any comments from the council? Seen none? All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item C, which is ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption. These items scheduled for second and final hearing adoption will actually be considered now. These items were heard and introduced on May 17, 2018, and votes for the second hearing will be taken tonight. So item 6C1 is hold the second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a 12-foot easement for irrigation and public utility purposes located in the subdivision south of Carver Road and east of 70th Street. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council? I don't think so. Is there any questions or concerns from the council? Nope, I think you're good. No, then, okay, then. You do not need to speak to the council. Thank you for being here, though. I really do appreciate you taking the time to be here. Okay. All right. So now there's nobody in the audience that wishes to speak to the council. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded for the approval of item 6C1. All those in favor say aye or vote? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you for being here. Item 62 is hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a reciprocal easement agreement between Springbrook Development LLC and the city of Tempe across a shared drive located between lots four and five of the Pier 202, amended subdivision at 1190 East Vista del Lago Drive. This, too, is a public hearing item. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? Seen none, council? Is there any comments, concerns? Is there a motion? In a second? Motion has been made and seconded for the approval of 62. All those in favor say aye or vote? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much. The last item under this section is 6C3, which is hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a parking easement and agreement with Springbrook Development LLC for a portion of Lot 5, Pier 202. This, too, is a public hearing item. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council regarding item 63? Seen none, council? Is there any questions, concerns? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for the approval of 63. All those in favor say aye or vote? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
I think we got them all. All right, motion has been made and, oh, actually been voted on, and it is approved seven to zero. All right, thank you all very much. Yeah, we've been, we've been doing that pretty good. I don't want you guys to get kind of crazy, because we actually have two more meetings after this one, so don't go anywhere. I know you want to be here for all of them. All right, current events and announcements? Okay, where do we want to start? Councilmember Keating?
Nothing for me, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Cooby?
Just, um, happy 35th anniversary to myself and my husband.
Oh, congratulations, councilmembers of Ira. The voices from above, do you have anything that you would like to announce? Okay, that's a no? All right. My only announcement is I think we're not gonna be back here for a little while, so I just want to say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there, and especially to, you know, my husband, who I think he is a wonderful father, and my own father, who has been an extremely important role model, just a really, a great man in my life, and I'm so forever grateful to have him be my father and just much appreciated. Hopefully, he's watching tonight, and this will give me some brownie points. But anyway, happy Father's Day, Dad. Love you very much. You guys want to suck it up and say it now? Because, no, okay.
Dad died.
Sorry. Oh, my gosh. Okay, we're gonna move on. Okay. We did, I did. That was bad. That was so bad. All right, scheduled, let's see. There are no speakers under scheduled public appearances tonight. Are there any unscheduled speakers that wish to speak to the council here tonight? All right. Seen none. We are really adjourned for the first meeting. But we do have another meeting, so give us a second. We're gonna go ahead and turn the room around, and we are gonna have our special meeting for the Rio Salado Community Facilities District Board.